It's now five o'clock and I don't see. Um, is Michelle and Mike on here yet?
Michelle didn't think she was gonna make it. She sent me, you know, a maybe, maybe not earlier, so.
Okay.
That's the only one. Is Tony, Tony on?
No, not as far as I can tell. Well, let's wait another minute or two here, um, before we get started.
Is Mike not on either?
Don't see him.
I don't see him.
Huh.
Oh, I could do what I do. See what am I looking for? I do pepper. I need a pepper.
Get yourself a sandwich too, Terry. Terry, do you know how to click on that little icon that shows a camera? Do you see that? Cause it's a, there's a line in front of it when it says your name. There's a line across it.
Says, listen, she's talking all this Matthew, Terry. She called me for tech support earlier and her name says Leon Beach. So, listen. Well, let's just admit we all need a little tech help today.
I think I'm the smartest one here and I don't know hardly anything.
I think, I often think you are too, Rock.
What time do you get open in the morning, Ted? I need to come in with an issue.
Nine. Let me just. Well, I think we should probably go ahead and get, um, going on it before we wait too long here. Uh, I have appreciation for everybody's time. Ah, okay. Oh, did we get one more? Oh, there's Mike. Hey, Mike. Okay, well, let's call the meeting on ISG three sixty-one school board to order. Roll call. Mike Holden?
Here.
Michelle Hedner? Tony Corpey? Jennifer Window?
Here.
Ted Saxon here. Terry Murray?
Here.
Roxanne Stokset Beach?
Here.
Kevin Grover?
Here.
Elvar Jeffrey, student representative? Don't believe she's with us today. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mute your mic if you want, or no. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, the first, um, item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mike and a second by Rock?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion on your part, Kevin?
No, I think, um, I'm just up quick glance and I don't have any corrections. I just have some comments as we go through.
Okay.
Kevin, was that one thing needing to be pulled out separate about the Harlan C. contract?
No, it's under action items separate. So that's why I just, we added in the consent. So, no, it's good.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, I've got a motion by Mike and a second by Roxanne for approval of the agenda. Um, hearing no other discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Or is there any discussion for? No? Okay. Roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hedner, uh, Tony Corpey. I'm just gonna do the people that are here. So if they show up and I don't notice them, please let me know. Jennifer Window?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Stokset Beach?
Yes.
Uh, it passes unanimously by zero. Um, open forum, public open forum. Do we have any takers today? Um, the public open forum. Okay, um, anybody's always welcome to do that public open forum. I know it's a little tougher with, um, with it being uh, remote and we're hoping that we'll talk later on about how we can make this less remote when we get to it. All right, um, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
The motion.
Circle out our marks.
And a second by Roxanne. Uh, approve, pass. Oh, okay. So, we have our, let me make sure I'm doing everything right. Yes. Okay, so we got a motion by Jen and a second by, uh, Roxanne. All right, and we have to do another roll call vote. So.
Can I just make a few comments, please?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, if I ever go out, I would, I'll wait up.
So, um, just a couple of comments, um, and I, and I just wanted to bring it up because earlier, um, several, uh, kind of touched base. Um, hockey cheerleading number seven, um, uh, he, uh, did the interviews. There were several people. There were a few, um, students that came and talked to me, but we are on base and highly recommend the hire of Carla or cheerleader advisor. I just want to bring it up because I know of you, a few of you had touched base with me. You know, just because there was a little, um, discussion out there. And again, I just want to make it clear that students, just as well, anyone has a right to, you know, bend our ear, um, speak their mind, um, but I think, um, it's under good leadership and things will run smoothly. Number seven, number ten, I just want to bring up, Colton is our, um, he was our part-time person that we put to full-time. Um, he's, uh, he had shared, I believe he's taken in our going into an apprenticeship program. Um, so, you, you know, taking something to, um, go a different track. So we will be, in fact, that might already be posted to replant it. Um, but that's, that was the reason given for the resignation. Um, and then just so you're aware, on number twenty-four, the joint powers agreement with Northland Learning Center, the reason we have to redo that, the real only change is Virginia and Evolith are combining. And so that changes that agreement between a different number of districts now. So that is the only, um, change there. Um, so those are the comments that I have.
All right, does anybody else get any clarification? Yeah, go ahead.
I had a question. Kevin, did, I see that the volleyball assistant coach is hired. Did, can you just refresh my memory? Did we already hire a head coach or is that yet to be determined?
No, last month we hired, I think it was last month, we hired the head coach. And so now would be standard procedure to allow that person to be involved in hiring the head, or the assistant. Um, so.
That was Sarah Peterson, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question too, and, and it's a techn- technical, technological question. It is, how, um, are, how are we able to see the agenda now? Um, I see it right now for me, I can see, oh, now, so that must be Ted, you're moving it up.
No, I, I, I'm moving it. I'm sharing my screen and so I'll try, you know, we can't see everything here, but I will try keeping going, you know, as we go through the agenda. So if there's anything you wanna, you know, you were gonna talk about, there was a contract, I'll open it up so everyone can see it.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
Was that your clarificate, was that what you were looking for, Rock?
Well, yeah, for now, because I just, I would assume eventually we'll get a little better on technology so we can maybe, um,
Yeah.
see our, in, uh, see our agenda and, and still do, uh, see each other. I don't know.
So, yeah, I think we'll have a longer discussion about that here in a little bit because it has to do with, um, our back-to-school preparations and stuff like that. Um, and the technology and going back to meeting in person, but not all meeting in person. So we'll get to that outside of the consent agenda, I think. Um, and see and try to figure something out that works for everybody.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. So on the consent agenda, is there any other clarification questions? All right, um, hearing none, then we'll call it to a vote again. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Jennifer Window?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Stokset Beach?
Yes.
All right, it carries unanimously. All right. Ah, you know what? Kevin, can you go ahead and bring the resolution of acceptance of gifts up?
Yep.
I have a static PDF, so. When you download the PDF, the link, don't click back to it.
Yeah, just give me, sorry, give me one second. I lost something here. Here's the consent agenda.
Yep.
Ted, is that your screen that's making a circle going waiting, waiting, or is that yours, Kevin?
I don't see a waiting, waiting screen.
No, it's, it's just I'm going through. Sorry, I didn't realize I had to click through each item here on the consent agenda to get to, just to second.
Okay, it's been going since we started the meeting.
Um, yeah, I don't know what to tell you, Rock. Just bear with us.
So Ted, can you see that? No, it's not very big.
Yep, thank you very much. All right, I'll entertain a motion to, for resolution of acceptance of gifts.
The motion.
I'll second.
We got a motion by Jen and a second by Mike. Um, resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas school board policy seven oh six establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts and donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute four six five point oh three states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device, or of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board of International Falls Public Schools, ISG three sixty-one, accepts with appreciation the following gift donations and grants received by the district. Volunteer track coach from Bronco Track Boosters in memory of Randy Marks for Special Olympics Program. Oh, wait, that's two different things. Sorry, I was reading them both. So, um, from Bronco Track Booster, three thousand five hundred dollars, and then in memory, this is a separate one, in memory of Randy Marks for Special Olympics Program fifty bucks. That's pretty awesome. I got a motion by Jen and a second by Mike. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call it to a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Jennifer Window?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Stokset Beach?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to action item or adopt the resolution, adopt resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty long-term facility ten-year plan. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Rox, do I have a second?
I'll make it.
And a second by Mike. Um, is this one that we need to read out?
No, this is not, and I can just make comments, and I know, um, and I shouldn't say I know, I was not part of Tom met with at least a couple, maybe all of the facility committee. Um, I don't know, a few weeks ago. Um, again, I just advise out, you know, for instance, right now in July and August, we are, and I gotta get my mind going, working on most part our twenty-one plan. For the most part, it gets done in July and August for fiscal twelve, twenty-one, possibly a little in June next year, but our major projects that are going now. And so for the most part, I was gonna say on our ten-year plan, looking at twenty-two is really the most important thing right now because, let's face it, our projects are up and running and for the most part bid out for twenty-one. Um, there could be, like I say, a little cleanup towards the end or something that we leave. Um, but for the most part, um, you know, it's the long-term planning of what we want done to our facilities. And obviously, you know, this year being, um, the elementary project is the major, if you will, um, and larger than most years, obviously. We have some sidewalk work that's, you know, outside the high school here that's getting done. There's some paving, um, or should say not paving, seal coating. Um, there's lockers, there's, um, hopefully, and here's an example of one that might drag a little bit. Um, the preschool rooms getting those walls all the way to the ceiling. That's one piece that's kind of sitting there waiting for the major project to get done before we can finish that. Well, whether there's enough time here at the end of the summer to get that in, or whether it ends up being an M E A break, you know, and, or Christmas trying to squeeze it in. There's a few things like that that need to. But, um, for the most part, as we've always said, it's an ongoing flexible plan because as things come up, things get pushed around back and forth, but, um, I guess that's, and I can click on any of these if there's any of them you want, um, you know.
Kevin?
Yep.
I would, I would like to add again, cause I know I've said it a, a, a number of times, uh, these faucet handles. Um, apparently Tom didn't, he, he had said that yes, they could be done, and so I assume they are gonna be done. And then Tom, I guess, didn't know what I meant by those, by lowered handles. I guess he calls them paddle handles. I, I guess there's a number of names for them, but, you know, to put those regular kind of handles in, especially in a time when there's pandemic, I really think that it would be a, a, a big improvement in terms of germ spreading if we could have those kind of handles that are just a single handle so you can turn them off with your forearm or whatever, and instead of having both hands, having to first wa- or turn them on with dirty hands, wash your hands, and then turn the dirty handles off. I just, I just think in this day and age, we should do better than that. So I really hope that we can get that, uh, rectified sometime in the near future.
I can make an, I thought, I thought they replayed, or I thought they switched one, and I thought he had said that they got, cause aren't you talking the, the timed, I wanna call them timed button?
No, no, they're not timed. They're just like any, you know, like, uh, there's just like one paddle instead of two handles that you turn. It's one paddle. And it's not timed. You just push it up for turning it on and either to the right or left and push it down to turn it off.
Are you talking in the west end bathroom?
Yes, I'm talking about, those are the worst that I see, the, the west end bathrooms.
And are you talking the multi, what, what I'm getting at is are you talking the multi-use bathroom? Because I, I wanna say in the men's bathroom, it's the, what do you call it? The timed handles and they adjusted those because, you know, again, they get out of, what do you call them? Sink or?
Yeah, they never work though, Kevin, because they have been adjusted a number of times because the spring gets loose and then the timing goes off. So you have to keep on turning them on again and again.
Hey, guys, can I, can I kinda interrupt this conversation? You're getting into the weeds on a long-term facility plan that's ten years long. Um, about handles. I'm not saying that that's not important. It's the, this is a comprehensive long-term facility plan and, um, I, I really think we need to focus seriously on COVID measures when we open back up and how we're gonna do that, but this is, this is a, uh, action item to discuss that up.
Okay.
So anyways, um, does anybody else have any, uh, discussion relevant to, um, approving that, this long-term facility maintenance plan? I, I got a feeling we'll be talking a lot about COVID over the next month or two and how we're gonna appropriately do that. Um, okay, so I had a motion with it, um, I didn't write it down, it was by Jen and Mike, I believe.
Rocks. Rocks, rocks.
Okay, thank you. Um, without any further discussion, I'm gonna send it to a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Jennifer Window?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray? Uh, Roxanne?
Terry, you're, you're on mute, Terry.
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. Roxanne Stokset Beach?
Yes.
All right, it passes unanimously by vote. Um, moving on to action item number three. Approve agreement with Rainy Lake Medical Center for Therapy Services effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty to August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We got a motion by Terry, a second by Mike. Um, without further discussion and Jen will abstain.
Yep.
Sorry, not from the discussion. You can, you can stop there. You just can't follow it.
And ju- just so the groups aware, this is for, um, you, you know, or it's a continuation of a contract we've, I'm gonna say, had for many years. The only adjustment, and I believe it is one dollar increase in fees, and I actually jumped back to, um, uh, eight, eighteen nineteen. I just happened to click on one this morning because, um, someone asked the question, and it just stuck in my mind, a dollar. I didn't find last year's, but eighteen nineteen, for instance, the main group was sixty-seven, um, dollars. It's up to seventy-two dollars an hour. I mean, in eighteen nineteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, three to four years, that's a very acceptable increase. And again, I'd like to say, I think it was seven, twenty-one last year. So that, that's the only change to two positions was, I think, a dollar increase per hour in each of them. So very happy with the services we get and would recommend approval.
Anybody else have anything else like that? Okay, I got a motion by Terry and a second by Mike. Um, without any further discussion, we do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes. Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Stokset Beach?
Yes.
Jennifer Window?
Abstain.
It passes unanimously four zero with one exception. Uh, moving on to the next action item. Approve the secretarial position changes as recommended. I'll entertain a motion. Anybody? All right, well, so here's the deal then. If we don't have a motion, we have to talk about something. So I would recommend if you plan on not supporting this and you wanna have a conversation about it, to make a motion. And if you don't wanna have a conversation about it, um, or you should, but we can have it in a different way that's not in the action item, I suppose.
I'll make the motion. This is Rox.
I'll second.
We got a motion for Roxanne and a second for Terry. All right, remember making a motion for something generally means you support it, but it doesn't mean you have to support it. Especially when we need to discuss stuff. Um, all right, so now we're open for discussion. So, um, whatever the hesitancy is, it was, now's the time to talk about it.
And I guess I can start. If you, if you recall, we, I provided, and, and again, it came from a conversation, a couple of different directions. One, um, this is, uh, Missy was interested in asking for more, um, secretarial support at the elementary. Um, and so we sent out to some similar sized schools, and, and I don't, I go find it, but again, I shared this last go-around, if I can get it. Um, a sheet that we sent it out and got some input back from a variety of schools similar in size. And it also came about as a piece as we had a retirement here at the high school. Um, is it time to go from four to three? And that question has come up numerous times. Um, and this year, and, and I'm not saying anything good about the COVID situation, but that was one piece that came along was, you know, her retirement came at that time, so we sat, we didn't fill it. This spring not having athletics and stuff gave us some time. And so by our analysis, and I'm not saying it's easy, um, or it's gonna, you know, you know, be easy to do, but it looks like we are, um, I'm gonna say a little strong at the high school and we were a little weak, if you will, in staffing at the elementary. So the recommendation, um, that's what is in front of you along with getting job descriptions in place are, I'm gonna say, five, ten secretarial positions. It is a reduction, reduction from four at the high school to three. Um, we have some ideas. I'm not, again, not gonna say it's easy, but the flip side is I personally would feel bad hiring someone to replace, replace that position with a goal of six months from now, you know, figuring out how we can get rid of it. And so that's where we work to kind of combine four into three. There's still much work to do. Um, there's some ideas of automating some stuff, um, getting more online payments, getting, um, scheduling, um, like student scheduling to an electronic, um, endpoint. Same with, you know, registering for athletics or extracurriculars. It's a goal to get there. Not gonna say it's gonna happen overnight, but, um, that is our plan to readjust and give it a try. If it doesn't work, um, issues, we'll come back and revisit. But like you say, I would rather give it a whirl, um, and try it than go the other route, have someone quit to, you know, a job somewhere else and find out a few months from now, we're not gonna have a position for.
Kevin, does that, you said that on, uh, in Missy's building, that, that building was a little weak on secretarial services. So you did not do anything to address that, right?
No, we did. We, the, the, the same two positions are over there, but, um, and, and so I'm just looking at a, a sheet I had calculated hours before. The, um, Lor- and I'm gonna say the community ed F E S office secretary, that's Lori Humbert's position, was only six hours a day before. It went to eight hours a day, and we also went from a hundred more days to two hundred. So mainly it's two hours more a day. She is gonna be able to work in that office. So that position was increased. And Jamie's position, which we call kind of the principal secretary position, um, was aligned. It went from a hundred ninety-four days to the two hundred and eighteen. A full year, so to, eleven-month secretary. Oh, um, again, when we, um, put those two in place, um, it gets us more in line. We're not the highest and we're not the lowest any longer of F T E compared to the other two, or the other ones we compared to. So there was additional time put in over there and, um.
Kevin, Kevin, can you explain the high school situation there?
Okay, so what we did is in the past, and I'm just gonna abbreviate, we had an athletic secretary, we had a position we called an attendance secretary. We had one we call the principal secretary, and then we had a guidance secretary. So those were the four positions. So what we did is in essence, and there's no rhyme or reason, guidance is still there. We did, um, just say guidance is still there, pretty much whole. We took the athletic secretary, which was Lori Jorgensen's position, and we combined that, I'm gonna say, part of it or the majority of it or a chunk of it with Jen Erickson's position. We put some of it with Vicky's position. And then we took a few things and sent back to Josie in the back in guidance. So we combined four into three.
So, and nobody's losing a job through, because of attrition. Lori retired, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So I do have, I do have a question though, um, more, I guess, more of a thought. Um, we're gonna talk about shortly, uh, Kevin's, um, performance evaluation and everything like that. And, uh, um, I just, it makes me think that we have to be providing the right tools, you know, in the right departments where we need them and everything like that. And, uh, um, I, I think I would have liked to see, but Kevin would be, you know, better than this. So it's more of a question of should there be a dedicated part-time or full-time, um, superintendent secretary? I know what was, years ago, when we went out for the referendum, um, why we cut that, um, but it, it's one of those things where we're paying Kevin a lot of money to do some secretarial work. And so I just wanna make sure you're gonna have the tools. We can talk about it more, um, but that's kind of like, but it's just like that for, as, everything. And are we also properly utilizing the secretary when we have them? Um, and so I, I think that these job descriptions are a good start to down that road of proper utilization.
And I guess to be honest with you, Ted, looking at the data we got, and again, because we got information, um, and again, I can share this out. I shared it last month. Um, you know, looked at things from community ed to secretaries to, um, well, not principals, but assistant principals, deans. And to be honest with you, the majority of schools right now, out of the, I'm gonna say, five that provided info and, um, I guess there were eight, I think, that we asked, maybe nine that we asked for, majority of them don't have a superintendent secretary anymore. And, uh, to be honest with you, we, I mean, like it or not, it's probably the same reasons. Things have gotten tighter and we try keeping these away from kids as much as possible. And, um, it's an area that it's.
Okay, well, the, the, the situation that I. Okay, well, the situation that I would just like to avoid is you not being able to lead because you're working on a spreadsheet or something, you know, like that, that somebody else could be doing. And so not to say I don't approve, I don't approve of what we have listed here. I just, I want to make sure that the tools are provided. That way we don't, we don't have to worry about any shortcomings because you're doing, you know, work that you shouldn't be doing. That somebody who gets paid less to be, should be doing.
And had something, Ted.
Yeah, yeah, I figured, Jen, I was waiting for you to hop on.
I appreciate that we have the extra support at Falls El. I think that'll improve organization and can help, you know, families experience there and hopefully adequately support Missy and her team. I like the job descriptions. I appreciate that you guys went through that process of being more clear about that because it sounds like that was necessary. And I understand right now that we have, you know, there's a lot of fiscal uncertainty with what's going to happen over this next year and how are we going to support what needs to happen? Lots of uncertainty about what needs to happen too and what that's going to look like in-house or out. So with that much uncertainty, again, I know that you guys are making decisions the best you can for what's a lot of unknowns. So I'm appreciating that too. I just want to at least mention some of my concerns. I, I look forward to what we digitize because I think that, I don't want to lose people and then lose some customer service because I think we needed to maybe improve the customer. I think of the family as the customer and the student as the customer, increasing, making sure we're still keeping that on the forefront. So I, I don't want to, if we're reducing our staff, I don't want to lose that. I also don't want them, just like, I wanted to say the same thing that Ted said is that I, you know, I want to make sure that the principals and Mr. Grewy Watts and the administrative staff, including you, Kevin, and the business office have enough staff to do what you need to do. I appreciate looking at other schools, but I need, I would like us to make sure we're doing, we have what we need for our needs, even if that might be a little heavier here, a little less here. Because I agree that we want you to be doing, I know that in today's day and age, you're running your own calendar, like that might not be a dedicated secretary. But really making sure that we're training those administrative staff to do as much as they can for you and the other administrators. We've heard from you, from the principals, from the business office, that there's a lot of work. And now we're reducing that support for them. Where else can we make sure that we're digitizing? Is there a software that can make Stacy's job easier, crunching all these numbers? I'm not saying I know there is. I trust you guys will look for that and, and invest in that if we need to. Because in these small districts, there's all these extra duties. You don't have an HR person, a curriculum person, all these people. So I know that everybody's got a hundred hats to wear and that sometimes that extra support is really important. So I am, you know, I'm concerned about your, the administrative workload because I think the heavier you guys all get in your workload, the harder it is to talk about growth and new things, right? I, I've been an advocate of trying to say, how can we get more of our students in our seats that live in our district? And you can't quite go to something new if we're bogged down with already too much work. So it's hard to, it's hard to expand, so to speak. If, I know in a shrinking town, you might not feel like you're expanding, but like thinking about new ideas in that way. So those are some of my concerns. I trust you've taken a good look at that, but I hope we revisit that if we feel like there's still a workload issue, not knowing, and I don't know, we're not going to know how this year goes, but I hope that, that we'll revisit it if we feel like maybe we need that support.
This Rox, I'd like to add to the discussion. I would be remiss if I didn't say that I, you know, if and when we go to discussing having more secretarial help, for example, for the superintendent or principals or whatever, I just really think that we need to look at hard examples, concrete examples of what kind of things are necessary that, that the superintendent and principals are doing that they would need help for. Because I appreciate so much the fact that Kevin is being really honest about the, what other school districts are doing. And not that we have to do what other school districts are doing, but we all have to realize money is tight and there, I just need to say that when and if we have more discussion, I will want to look at concrete examples, so.
Oh, this is Terry. I'd like to ask Kevin something. Kevin, you guys, I assume, spent a lot of time going over these job descriptions and looking to see what's best. So I'm assuming this is something that's going to make sense. What are some of the issues that people are bringing up that are making people think twice about accepting this plan? Have you heard anything they could pass on, Kevin?
Oh, I, I mean, I'm just going to be realistic. You know, you take the three secretaries. I'm not going to say they, all three of them brought the idea, you know, to us. I mean, we've all been around enough and, and, you know, been in a department that has had reductions. And obviously they have concerns. And I, I would say Tim, myself, I'm not going to say Missy, because he's actually, you know, gaining a little bit, you know, for the elementary, but I think all three of us would agree. Yeah, everyone knows, no one was jumping up and down that, you know, we're making this recommendation. But different people have, you know, how would I say, different views, willing to dig in. I, I'm confident all, you know, all, well, I'm going to say all five, 10 employees, when stuff happens, yeah, we make a decision like a school board, they will go forward and do the best job they can and we're going to see how things work. But that's mainly where the, I'm going to say, pushback areas come is, you know, let's face it. I would say they'd be a little remiss if they didn't try saying, hey, this isn't good. We, you know, we're busy, and they are busy. I'm not going to say, you know, it's just, I don't know if that makes sense. But that's where a little bit of the pushback, you know, is coming. But when it's, when the tough decision's made, I expect them to do the best job possible. And I agree, we will revisit and see how things are going here, you know, over time. And yeah, it may not be in the first three months, two months, because who knows what school is going to be? And we'll talk about that in a minute. But, you know, in an actual environment where we have all of our athletics, we have everything running, that'll be the telltale time. And like it or not, it may be a good time for kind of the moving things around because most likely we're not going to be a hundred percent in the building, you know, meaning a hundred percent of the students all at once and activities. I'm fairly confident it's going to be a reduced flow to start out and. That make sense?
Yes, it does.
I'd like to say something, Ted.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Mike, and then we'll go back to Jen, since Jen has spoken once. So we'll go right back to you, Jen. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so I'm not going to be around in a few months. I'll be done with my term and stuff. And, but I think it's important that this does get revisited. Yep, you know, if, let's say it passes and then it doesn't work out, I think it's important that it gets revisited and as soon as possible. Because if it gets to be really a problem, they get overloaded, it needs to be addressed then and not just shoved in a corner. So that's if it passes, okay? That's my opinion.
Yeah? Thanks, Mike.
I kind of second that. I want us to be able to look at it. I've heard a lot over the last year that there's a lot of work at the top and in the business office. And I don't, I'm not saying that administrative assistant staff can do all those jobs. I just think, I don't, we can't, we just, we need enough to get the job done and we can't overwork people or make them feel, I just want to make sure people feel like they have a reasonable role, you know, job. And I know this year, going into this year, so many uncertainties. And like you said, if we're not in the building, it really changes things. And so, I mean, I understand that. But I also want to say that I think our administrative staff are doing an excellent job. And I didn't say that before. I think they do a great job. They are wonderful front end people. And there's so much that they do that I know we don't know about day to day. And I appreciate the part I do see and I appreciate what they're doing behind the scenes. They've been really great at getting back to me and being helpful when I've had to call and ask questions. And so I don't, I should have said that earlier.
Thank you. The only other thing, Ted, I, sorry. The only other thing I would throw in there, and we got to kind of make sure we don't mix the different combinations. When we talk, for the most part, my, the stuff I deal with or the business office deals with, for the most part, that stuff would not go into these positions because most of that is confidential information. And that's where a superintendent secretary, that position came from years ago. It was confidential, meaning they were dealing with negotiations. They were dealing with, you know, personnel items, if we're having, you know, that I needed help with or was dealing with things from the business office, be it, you know, whether, and I'm just picking on insurance or, you know, billing. That stuff is separate compared to what happens on the front end of either building. You know, there is a little bit of a combination, you know, or gray area, obviously. For instance, you know, the front end in Falls Elementary or Falls High School, you know, they take payments, you know, for lunch accounts and different things like that. But then the stuff that goes to the back end, for the most part, becomes the confidential piece, meaning like free and reduced applications. You know, no one really has access to that. And so it goes to the back end where, if we can't take that stuff on the back end and put to a position on the front end, it just doesn't work that way. Not saying you can't hire, you know, that's the, kind of where the superintendent secretary position came from or would fill in if we needed more help with, you know, and I'm just picking on some of that. If it's confidential, it would go to a, you know, like a superintendent secretary position. If it's front end or, you know, kind of running the school on the student's family end, that would go up front. And I just want to make sure because there is a slight difference between the two groups, if you will.
So I guess the last, so the last point I was, I just would like to make is, and we're going to talk about this more, is the flexibility that we need to be going forward, especially when we don't know what a secretary is even going to be doing in a month. To me, I perceive that the month, that the vote put on us, just from the state, is going to grow. I mean, just for this COVID stuff or the going back to school plan. And this, this gives us the opportunity to hire that person if we need it still too. It's not like this is the amount of secretaries we need to go with forever. It just gives us more chances or more time to be a little bit more flexible and be with the Minnesota Department of Health and the governor are going to set down their way. Okay, does anybody else have anything that they would like to add to this action item discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Jennifer Window?
Yes.
Ted Zaxton, yes. Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Sosa Beach?
Yes.
Terry's unanimously five to zero. Moving on to, oh, it's like we're, now moving on to administrative report. So Melissa Tate, elementary principal.
I would just say, we have been working to prepare, obviously, those three plans that the governor has put out, both here and at the high school. I know we reached out to our staff to get their interest in helping us to determine what the instruction might look like for those three scenarios of the everybody hybrid or distance learning. And at Falls El, I had a great turnout. I think I had about twenty-some teachers join me for our first session. Our first session lasted a little over two hours. And we focused first on distance learning, just because we had, just recently went through distance learning, went over some of our survey results. And the majority of the things that came back to us from our survey were, one, parents wanted one platform versus, you know, a lot of teachers were using Facebook and Google Classroom and just several different platforms. So parents were saying it might be easier if they had one platform. They'd like to not, if we had paper pickup again, they prefer not to come to the school as often as they did, like the weekly pickups were just too much. So we talked about some of those things. Tim and I have both been involved in lots of meetings through MASP or other principals on the range. And so that's been helpful too, to see what they're doing and talk things through. Sometimes the people from the department of ed come on those conversations. So that's been helpful. But I mean, for the most part, that has, is what we have been doing as of late is just kind of gathering information and really in infancy of developing what those instructional plans might look like.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Tim Eversen, to secondary principal.
Yeah, I'm going to say about the same thing that Missy did. Where we actually had, got two meetings. We had a meeting last week, the same day she did. And I've got between fifteen and twenty teachers. We went about two hours. We met again today at nine and we went until almost noon. So we've had a lot of good discussion and there's just, there's a lot of questions out there yet. And we're waiting for more guidance from the state coming next week. And one of the things we talked about today was, you know, the possibility of redoing our schedule just a little bit and being able to have a daily homeroom where the kids can check in with the teacher. And, you know, looking at a hybrid. And we want to, the same thing about a, you know, a similar platform for everyone. We talked about maybe similar assignment schemes, how we're going to do it, are we going to do it by the week or by the day? And try to make things as uniform as possible for kids and families at home. And our hybrid then being able to roll right into a distance learning situation if we had to, and then probably back to hybrid. So we want to make sure we can come up with a plan here at the high school that is one and the same. We know we're going to start with students, full-time distance learning from the start, regardless of how we come back, they're just going to make that choice. So we need to, we're working with Kev to come up with the survey for our families. We want to get our plans in place a little bit better so we can survey our families to find out about transportation needs, you know, what they feel as far as their comfort level coming back or sending their kids back. We also need to survey staff to see where staff is at. And we need to survey our substitutes to see how we're doing on that end. And it's just hard with a lot of unknowns right now, but we're having a lot of good conversation. And we know we need to work really closely with Missy in the elementary because we share busing and we share teachers. So whatever we do, and if we alternate days in a hybrid situation, we need to keep that in mind. We're going to do everything we can to keep families together if we can. If they're here for a couple of days and then gone for a couple, any kids at the high school, we'd want to keep them together with their siblings in the elementary. So lots of little pieces to think about. Kev had started getting like directors together. So we've got transportation and food service. So there's a lot of different people involved dealing with those different pieces. We're just really focusing on instruction right now with my group.
This is Rox. Did both Tim and Missy provide both in-person discussion as well as Zoom discussion? So those who didn't want to come in, could, teachers who didn't want to come in could still be part of it?
Our teachers preferred Zoom. Most people are not wanting to come in at this point though.
Ours didn't all Zoom.
Okay, okay, great. Just curious, thanks.
And just, you know, with the special ed piece, that is going to be a little bit different, how we do that, you know, as far as making sure we're meeting the needs of those kids. So we've talked about that, that at the high school, if we move into a hybrid situation, that we're going to do, you know, everything we need to do to meet the goals and needs of those kids and their IEPs. And that's going to probably look a little different than the general ed classes.
And I should add too, at the elementary, I mean, we are working really hard to figure out how to get our youngest learners here every day if possible, just because they are that population with the, you know, they will lose, lose the most with that critical reading age. So we are working hard to try to figure that out too, what that might look like.
Well, thank you guys very much. I know it's crazy that you have to come up with three different solutions and you're probably not going to use any of them once they come out with the new guidelines. But I really appreciate your resilience and I know the rest of the board does too.
I want to thank the teachers for participating in this. We have a number of special ed teachers and core area teachers and specialty teachers. So we've had a lot of interest and they've stuck it out for five hours of meetings. So it's. So it's- Good so far. I didn't mean to interrupt Ted, but I want to say thank you to those teachers.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
No, it's awesome. It's very obvious our staff has been busting their humps over this whole COVID situation. It's greatly appreciated. Um, Kevin Grover, superintendent.
Okay. And kind of in no specific order here, I just, I want to throw a few things out. Um, one, I'll start kind of on the same note that Tim and Missy have been on, you know, the, um, this is supposed to be our downtime. Technically, Tim and Missy are out, you know, most of the time in July or a good chunk of July. And it's almost the opposite right now because, um, you know, it is too much for any one person. It's too much for any five people, even in a district our size, you know, to come up with all the different scenarios. And so again, I'll start off by thanking not only Tim, Missy, but as they had mentioned, um, we have the nurse, we have food service, we have transportation, we have technology. All those people are, um, you know, trying to do the lift for their piece, so to speak. We come back together again tomorrow morning to kind of get an update of where everyone's at, see what hurdles we each run into. Because, you know what? A group of, I'm going to say, eight people around the table can come up with better ideas, and that's why, you know, they're working with their staff to give input and give direction. The, um, the union heads were all invited in and have participated as well, so that, um, you know, they're aware and can put input and concern. And the tough part is right now, yeah, we're looking at a, I'm going to say, several many different options on just about anything you would ask on. Um, some things we're finding out maybe we can't do, we're getting ideas from other places on what they're doing. And I guess, you know, part of me feels, you know, really good, but yet, until we get, and I'm going to say the week of July 27th, or whenever the governor, Department of Ed, Department of Health, until they make their call on, okay, we're doing X, you know, which three? It's hard to really nail things down and get too far into the weeds because there's just so many moving parts. You've heard Missy talk about, you know, and I agree, and many schools around are looking at, how can we get our earliest learners here as much as possible? They're the, I'm going to say, the hardest ones to do distance learning with. Can you get K through grade two coming on a daily basis, or three times a week, or four times a week? As well as some other populations. The Department of Ed, um, hit very heavily on equity. Now, keep in mind, equity doesn't necessarily always mean equal for all. Are there populations, and whether it's be special ed, whether it be some of our technical classes, that need to be in the building more than maybe some other groups? Those are all pieces that we're looking at, and there's so many, I'm going to say, different cogs to try getting lined up because a huge part, and I shouldn't say, a huge part depends on transportation. You know, can we get, you know, half of our kids here if they have to be spaced on buses, you know, every day? Maybe we can only get a third. Um, we are going to ask, like they talked about, there's, we're working on a survey, but until we know a little more specifics, it's hard for me to answer if I'm comfortable sending my student here now, you know, until you know what it's going to look like. Um, so until we have a little more detail, we're not willing to put all the questions out that we need to get out there because we're going to have to not only Facebook and webpage, we're probably going to be making personal calls to get families to respond because we need to know, I'm going to say, ninety-five percent of what our family's doing. Because if all of a sudden there's a quarter of the population hanging out there that we don't know if they're coming, not coming, do they need transportation, we won't be able to do the best job possible, um, you know, to get as many. We do know there are going to be ones that are going to, um, distance learn, go with our district, um, because they're not comfortable, and that's just fine. And, um, there isn't, I'm going to say, and it's hard for me to say, there isn't going to be a right or wrong answer on this. It's what we as parents and community are comfortable with. Unless the governor just comes out and says a hundred percent distance learning, you know, that's where we're starting, well, then, that's what we are all starting with, and we do the best job. And even that, there's a lot to find to it. It's different than the distance learning that we did last spring. Both Missy, Tim, myself, and their groups recognize there's things that will be different and should be different, you know, it's part of that growing. Just like midstream, we did adjust some things last year. So a lot of time, effort, um, uh, there will be weekly communication going out from this point forward. You know, um, this week, it'll be more of an update, I'm guessing, um, just generic that, you know, we continue to meet and stuff, unless, you know, the governor would surprise us and come with some stuff early. But once we have its Plan B, so to speak, now we can start, um, giving them a little more and asking more, you know, because that is very important, um, you know, how many are going to send, and how many are going to participate, um, and in what fashion. So, um, for the most part, um, I'm going to say ninety percent of the day right now is being spent on trying to work through these plans, um, which, like I say, even though there's only ten percent left, that's where we're doing our normal summer stuff. And I, it's just a reality right now. And it's, it's at times overwhelming, but then at times, you know, you get that, we're making progress, we're going to get through it, and we will. We have a great staff, you have a great staff, um, that will come up with a good plan, whatever it may be, and do the best that we can, and I'm going to say tweak it as we go forward. And we could go forward, backwards, all different directions over this next school year, you know, depending on where we start, and that's not in a bad way. You know, as the governor's talked, you know, he said you may use all three of the plans, and I, I would not doubt that, um, you know, you might use all three multiple times, you know, as things rise and fall and, you know, whatever. So, um, for the most part, that is a huge part of what we're doing. Um, and like I say, couldn't be happier with the group that, um, is working alongside or with us, so to speak. Um, couple other things, and I've heard from a couple of you, um, my gut is, and like I say, there's a lot of decisions to be made, and there's a lot of decisions that I foresee the board needing to weigh in on. But again, I don't know what they are right now, otherwise they'd be on the agenda today. Um, and so I'm asking that if we could set aside, and again, they don't have to be these dates, but I was just thinking, you know, that each Monday, if you will, in August, so to speak, I don't know if that'll work or certain times, because I don't know how much is going to like come, you see what I'm getting at is-
Yeah.
-we need more custodial help? Do we need more, you know, transportation help? And technically, we don't have the power to hyper, you know, um, what are we willing to do? Are we going to mandate masks? Are we not? You know, there's just so much that we're going to need input, and maybe, you know, we meet on August 3rd and we're not ready to make the decisions, but maybe by August 10th we are. Then we meet on August, I think it's 17th normally. I'm just throwing those out. They could be different dates, but we need to be ready that when we get a decision, it's going to be all feet to the fire, if you will, to be as prepared as we can. But yet, if we have to post for positions, we need some time, you know, if we have to hire, whatever we have to do, um, we're going to need some advice from you and some, um, decisions made. So whether it's not Mondays, it could be other days, it's just, I would like to get them on the calendar if-
I think that's a good idea, Kevin. I think it's-
Is it going to be five o'clock, do you think?
That was what our thought, our thought was just normal board time. I mean, it's open, I know Jen, Jen, well, there's several of you that work, and so, um, that was the plan, just log off Mondays at five, you know, again, not necessarily four-hour sessions, but if they're an hour, hour, you know, like a normal board meeting, maybe they are long. But, um, we just need to be ready to get some decisions made, not rush to decisions, but get decisions made and get the information out to our clients, um, and-
That's fine by me.
Okay.
Was there anything you would do that for?
I'll make whatever work.
Okay. So five PM on those two days, the third and the tenth?
Yep.
Oh, oh, okay. I thought you meant, uh, most weeks in August. You're just talking of the first two?
Let's just put the third-
Well, we have the third, tenth, and then the seventeenth.
The, the third, the tenth, and then the seventeenth would be our regular board meeting. So hopefully by that time, I hate to say it, hopefully we're getting, you know, closer. Um, if we, we need more, we'll set more as we go on, but, um, we're just thinking, you know, hopefully by the third week in August, at least we're, um, we're somewhat ready to go, or, I mean, we're still working, but major decisions hopefully on structure will be in place.
Okay.
Okay. Um, just a couple other updates, just so you're aware, um, we are still working on a choir person. Tim has an interview, um, coming up, or I should say, the district has an interview, um, for a choir person. We have one candidate, and our thing, it'll work out. Um, we're also going to be looking, we had a long-term sub, you hired her for a elementary position, so that long-term sub will be open again. And that is a huge, huge, um, area of concern long-term is subs. We've heard from numerous that they're not going to be comfortable coming in until things are different. And again, it's nothing personal, personable. Um, so anyway, we'll keep working on that. Um, the only other thing I had, and I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up, and I don't foresee an issue with it, um, Purple Pride, and I don't know if it's going to go or not, they were interested in, kind of like the, uh, what would you call, football team did the car wash and served burgers here on last Wednesday. Purple Pride, which falls under the Falls Ed Foundation, which they raise money a hundred percent for our, you know, our U, so to speak, grants to teachers. They are looking at possibly doing a fish fry in the back by like the softball field, again, social distancing and everything. Um, last I heard, it would probably be a drive-through event, but I'm just giving you a heads up that that may, you hear, may happen. They don't have their golf fundraiser this year, and they have access, um, to, um, pile of fish, um, that actually comes from, well, it comes from the Elks, but it comes from the DNR, it's donated. And so they're looking at possibly ways to raise some funds. And so again, um, I have no issue with it. And again, every, every, what would you call it, social distancing and all that will be, um, adhered to. So I'm just throwing it out there, um, so you're aware. I think, I think that's all I have, unless anyone has questions right now.
Does anybody have questions for Kevin? Okay. Well, thank you very much for that, Kevin. Um, moving on to committee reports, I don't think that on the committee report, we have listed our, um, Rox, myself, and Jen, are working on a strategic goals planning committee, and we have some new stuff on, and, um, it was just, we've been working on it for a little while, and Jen finished up the document on Friday of kind of giving us a little guidance of, um, the next steps forward on what that's going to look like per the recommendations of the School Board Association. I don't know if we have the, um, did that get sent out to everybody, Kevin, or was it too late to get it sent out to everybody?
I just printed it, you know, it was sent to me, and I guess, I don't, um, give me a sec here, I can possibly-
Well, if we're meeting, again, if we're meeting on, um, uh, if we're meeting, it's going to kind of coincide with a little bit what we're talking about. So we can hammer out if we're going to meet on the third, we can talk about that too.
Okay, yeah, well, because I didn't, I didn't, like I say, I didn't realize I was supposed to send it out to everyone.
I didn't ask it to Kevin because Rox and Ted were going to still review it, and then we were going to send it to you to send to the board, but they hadn't had time to review it yet.
Let's get it out.
And I was unavailable this weekend too, so, um, yeah, that was, that was mostly because I didn't have enough time to, um, give it due diligence too. Um, but Jen was nice enough to take the lead on that. So, um, we'll have it on August 3rd then, I suppose. I think that'll be fine, right, Jen?
Well, could we, could we send it out to everybody this Wednesday or something? If you and Rox can look at it and let me know if you have edits, and then send it to everybody this Wednesday, do you think about it?
Yeah, that'll work out for me.
Hey, so-
Or my friend, I don't think, you know.
So Jen, you're going to send it on Wednesday?
Well, I sent it to you guys, I sent it to you and Ted, and you were going to-
Yeah, I looked through it, I thought you meant you were going to do something different. Okay.
No, we'll get it out to the, eh, eh-
Okay.
But let's do this, Jen, when you're satisfied with it, when you've heard from Ted and Rox, if you send it to me, I will get it to all seven board members as like a fin, you know, I don't want to say a final version, but as a draft, so that everyone-
Right, as a proposal, yeah.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, then, uh, Community Ed Advisory Board, I don't think Dan's on, do we have any, uh, an update from what Dan's been working on? Want to come in?
I, I don't, we had earlier in the month talked, he was going to try, um, having a conversation about esports, but that's going to have to wait because I don't know, um, anything about, without him being here.
Yeah, no, I actually, I met him as a community member, less as a school board member, about esports, and it was pretty cool. I hope something comes of that. Um, all right, so then let's move on to the Recreation Commission. Um, Mike or Terry? You want to do it, Terry, or me?
Well, I'll cover what I have here, and then if there's something else, I might just add in, how's that?
Okay.
All I really wrote down was that, uh, we were going over the budgets for the, for the next fiscal year, and, uh, and we also looked at, uh, our budget's just ending, and there is a, a good chunk of money left over, which is not a big surprise because of, uh, every, of all the different things that were not done because of COVID. So, uh, I think the, I think it was around twenty-five thousand in that area. I don't know if Mike can remember right off, but, uh-
Yeah, that was it, yep.
Yeah, so we're looking at possibly, you know, if this is going to happen again for another year where things are going to be, uh, you know, not done, maybe look at some different ways of spending the money, um, for the kids in different ways, uh, which I don't know how that would be, but that's about all I got.
Yeah, that's pretty good. We saved some money because of not paying coaches because some of the sports weren't, uh, being played during this virus. And, uh, so, but I know it may sound like a broken record with me, but our finances and our rec commission are doing really good. And I tell that every time because we are doing really good. And, uh, the only other thing I want to report is, the Eighth Street Hockey Rink is not being utilized. Um, so the city's going to take a look at whether they're going to keep that open again. Um, they gave it a chance, and this last winter, um, it was hardly used. Uh, the general skating part, little kids on the general skating was used, but, uh, the hockey part wasn't used. So they may be, uh, possibly it's up to the vote of the city council, they may not use that, uh, hockey rink, so that's, uh, that's on their list. Other than that-
But they would use the other, the general rink, Mike?
That's what they're talking, yeah, that's what they're talking about, and we like that because, you know, um, if the little kids want to go there and skate, uh, there's no pucks flying, uh, on that little, there's no boards there on the general skating, but at least they get a chance to skate and stuff. So I, I would okay that if I was, um, having the general skating, but that's just, the hockey part's just not getting used.
Mm-hmm.
You turn the lights, you turn the lights on and nobody come, you know?
You know, I think that Rainier Rec Club did a pretty good job out there, and I think that's where, when I've been up, like, I go to the, I live a block away from Eighth Street, and it's nice, and, uh, my kids are there a lot, but when I go out to Rainier, that's where all the kids are. That seems to be the hotspot right now.
Then, uh, the only other thing, um, was kind of, well, I said it last time too, kind of sad, Little League just didn't, didn't get played this year. In nineteen eighty-nine, it was formed, um, at one time we had as many as eight hundred kids in the program. Um, and now, um, this year, because of the virus, of course, was the biggest thing, but , uh, Little League wasn't played, and it wasn't played across the nation either. So, um, kind of missed that. I mean, you drive by, uh, Rizzle Field, no action, no hot dogs, you know, that kind of thing, so, um, but the biggest thing is, we're doing good. thing, so, um, but the biggest thing is, we're doing good, uh, Rec Commission's doing good.
There's always next year, Mike, I I look forward to next year.
Yeah, me too, you're right, yep.
All right, well, thank you, Mike and Terry, for that update. Um, we, I'm sure we don't have an update from Student Council. Um, so the next thing we're gonna do is enter into a closed session to discuss uh, Kevin Grover Superintendent evaluation, so I'll entertain a motion, uh, the meeting will be closed as permitted by Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D point zero five, to perform the year-end evaluation of Superintendent Kevin Grover. Um, before we entertain a motion, because then everybody has to leave that's not a board member, Kevin, um, is there anything else anybody like, would like to add? All right, well, then, I'll, I will entertain that motion now.
I'll make that motion, I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mike and a second by Terry, um, and we'll do a roll call vote to get us back in there. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Yeah. Jen Window?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes, Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Scopesa Beach?
Yes.
All right, now we're gonna enter into a closed session, so thank you for everybody who came.